I did for a second. Yes.
Yes.
Are we up?
It says it's free nature.
It's on? Hallelujah. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. And it's 10:11. And we're coming on a little late. We have a little technical difficulties this morning. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer.
Sir, excuse me. Uh, I think it went. It's back there? Like, is it, uh? Did you send the cameras?
It's got seeing camera on it, yeah.
All right. It's up now, sir.
Do I need to start over?
Sure.
Up. Working now? Yes, there you go. Okay, good morning again. We're going to try this one more time. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, and it's 10:13 now. So, at this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life. As we carry on the duties, may we do it with peace and righteousness and give us wisdom. In Christ's name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Straight, Martin, Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from March 19th, March 9th, 2021, regular session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time, we'll open it up to public testimony. Does anyone here wish to speak? At this time, if they do come forward, state your name. We will address it at a later date, too, for the Internet. Anybody watching us live can go to our website, huntcounty.net. There's a banner there for questions. You can send a comment or a phone number, and we'll call you back later in the meeting, and we'll address anybody online later in the meeting. Old business. Number one, the request to construct a gas line on County Road 2586, Precinct 2. Daniel?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
In reference, if we may, may we correct that? If I'm not mistaken, it's not 2586, it's 2556 and 2558. Is that correct, Commissioner?
No, it's 2658 and 2656.
2658 and 56?
2656. Yes, sir.
Okay. So noted.
Thank you.
All right. Last time we were in court, there was some questions about some of the language that was in C-Energy's document. On the packet that I handed out to you earlier, there's the very last two pages of that document are emails from C-Energy where they agreed to change the problematic language and basically remove the large paragraph that used to be in the agreement and change it to a single sentence that basically says, "If the county is going to construct and improve roadway, that C-Energy will relocate its trunk line at their sole cost and expense." That was the sole item that came up last time, and they agreed to change it. And so, if you want to approve that item that was on the last Commissioners' Court, someone can make a motion to approve it with that change.
Okay.
Your honor, may I ask you this? They can put it in right away as far as law, but in reference to the distance put out by us or at our proposal, how deep and all that, we're going by the state rules and regulations. Was that a grab along there?
Yes, that's correct.
Goodness.
They're subject to the state utilities rules that are in the Utilities Code and the Water Code, and they're going to have to comply with those requirements.
Goodness.
Thank you, Daniel. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion for approval with noted changes?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business consent calendar. Commissioners, you have the consent calendar in front of you. Entertain a motion for approval?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
May we pull number 13 from the consent calendar so that we can talk in reference to executive session? I did ask Daniel Ray in reference to it.
Okay. Is that a? Okay. Any other comments? Not, entertain a motion for approval with the exception of number 13, which will be moved to later in the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, action item number one, a resolution extending and/or modifying April 28th, 2020 COVID-19-related resolution and social distancing guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Daniel?
That item is also in your packet. It's exactly the same as the one from two weeks ago. This one just extends it to the next meeting, which is three weeks from today.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners? Not, I'll entertain a motion for approval on action item number one?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number two, a proclamation for child abuse prevention and awareness month for April 2021. We have representatives here from CASA and Child Advocacy. If y'all would like to stand up, introduce yourself, and make comments before we read the proclamation, would y'all like to read it, or y'all prefer that we read it? It's up to y'all.
You're welcome to read it. I think y'all do a great job of that.
Okay.
But I'm Lori Copeland. I'm the Director of CASA for Hunt County.
I'm Amy Ramsey. I'm the Director of Community Outreach and Education for the Hunt County Children's Advocacy Center.
And I'm Jewel West. I'm the Director of Finance at the Children's Advocacy Center.
Thank y'all for being here. Okay, at this time, I'll read the proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, April 2021. Whereas 66,382 cases of child abuse were confirmed in Texas in 2019. Whereas each day in Texas, 187 children are confirmed victims of child abuse. Whereas every eight minutes in Texas, there are at least one confirmed case of child abuse. Whereas every week in Texas, on average, more than four children die from the abuse or neglect. Whereas last year in Texas, a total of 51,417 children were in the legal care of the state for their own protection. Whereas in Texas and throughout the nation, there are many individuals and agencies who are working to prevent child abuse, to raise awareness about child abuse, and to help child victims. Whereas in fiscal year 2019, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services served a total of 356,030 children, who by no default of their own became involved with DFPS, Department of Public Services, Child Protective Services, due to allegations and confirmed cases of child abuse or neglect. Whereas in Hunt County in 2019, Child Protective Services conducted 672 investigations of child abuse and/or neglect. Whereas in Hunt County, Child Protective Services worked with, on average, 153 children and their families each month of 2019. Whereas last year in Texas, a total of 11,066 court-appointed special advocates are CASA's volunteers who are assigned by the court to speak for the child's best interest. Whereas last year, CASA volunteers involved with one of the 72 CASA programs in Texas advocated for 29,229 children in foster care systems, giving over 2 million volunteer hours to serve these child victims. Boy, I hope we don't have to rig this every year. Hope we can stop this. Whereas in Hunt County, CASA volunteers advocate for 271 children. Last year, serving 100% of Hunt County children who were placed into foster care. Whereas CASA for Hunt County volunteers gave over 3,300 hours and 11,460 miles in order to serve the children in which they are appointed, saving Hunt County taxpayers 105,000 with volunteer services. Whereas Child Advocacy Center, CAC, is the front door for child abuse investigations process to provide collaborative response to children impacted by the abuse. Last year in Texas, 73 child advocacy centers across the state served more than 59,000 children each year. Whereas in 2020, every 15 hours was a confirmed child sexual abuse case. Whereas 98% of the child victims knew their alleged perpetrator. Whereas every child through the CAC has a chance for their voice to be heard and the healing process to begin. And in Hunt County, CAC staff and volunteers served 505 children last year. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding a solution requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Texas. Whereas child abuse can long, can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their family. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children in families in safe, stable, nurturing environments. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and family. Whereas the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economic, and social consequences, therefore hurting Texas's future. Whereas CASA for Hunt County, Hunt County Child Advocacy Center, Hunt County Child Protective Services, foster parents, teachers, counselors, attorneys, judges, and others work to ensure that children in our community have the opportunity to grow up in safe, loving, permanent homes. Now, therefore, I, Bobby Stovall, County Judge for Hunt County, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Hunt County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. That's hard to read. It's a shame that we have had this in our society, and we need to do everything we can to make sure that this goes away. And Sheriff, I know you're working hard at it. I know he's doing it all he can to help promote this. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of this?
So moved. Second?
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Y'all want pictures or? Okay. Y'all want to go down to Commissioners?
Get a picture with him? Take my jacket off.
So we need to take that somewhere.
I like standing in front.
Tell you what, I've been doing this many years, haven't.
We need to get closer, what?
When Tucker, when Tucker?
Yes, yes. Just let these work. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all.
We don't care if they see us. As long as they hear us, I don't care if they see me.
Okay, action item number three, a proclamation celebrating the 100th birthday of Miss Mary May Merrick Pickens. I've got, Commissioner, I received an email back in January from Gail Gorman, who's with the local DAR chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, asking that we do a proclamation celebrating Ms. Pickens's 100th birthday. And it was a privilege for me to do that, having known Pickens family most of my life. And Gary and I grew up together, so this is a fun one. Unlike what we just read, and we're happy to be part of Ms. Pickens's 100th birthday celebration time. And I hope she gets many more of them, because I want to come eat some more cooking. There's one place in high school that you got invited to, you didn't turn down. That was to go to the Pickens' house to have dinner. Okay, proclamation celebrating the 100th birthday of Marjorie Mae Merrick Pickens. Whereas Margaret Mae Merrick Pickens will be honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of her 100th birthday. And whereas she was born in Greenville, Hunt County, Texas, on March 31st, 1921, in the home of her grandmother and grandfather, Mr. and Mrs. J. O. Hayder, at 2216 Jones Street, and has been a resident of this community ever since. And whereas a child, she, along with her brother and sister, became a member of Central Christian Church at Washington and Wesley Streets and attended Greenville Public Schools. As a teenager, Mae Merrick played tennis on one of only three tennis courts in the city of Greenville at the time, is all three of which were privately owned, and as much as Greenville Schools had none. Mae learned to play competitive tennis in the court her father owned at the corner of Jones and Bodark Streets. Mae ultimately represented Greenville High School and tennis at the state quarterfinals in Tyler, Texas. And whereas in addition to her studies in tennis, she was a member of the Greenville Drama and Beagle Corps, which was, what?
Drum.
Drum, oh, I'm sorry. Can't read. Greenville Drum and Beagle Corps, which was the forerunner to the Greenville Flaming Flashes. Whereas in 1939, she graduated Greenville High School with honors and attended East Texas State Teachers College, the forerunner to Texas A&amp;M Commerce, Texas, where she was a member of the Tua, Tua Noah? Tua Noah? I can't speak Indian, you know that. A club which was the forerunner of Gamma Phi Beta Sorority, and where she obtained a teacher certificate. Whereas upon college completion, she became the wife of Murray Douglas Pickens, also of Greenville, Texas, on November 9th, 1941, in Greenville, Texas, one month before the Japanese attack on American forces at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, whereupon her early peaceful marriage was, like countless others, interrupted for the greatest war effort any generation ever undertook. And whereas after the war, this marriage was blessed with two children, three grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. Whereas in addition to being a wife and mother, she has remained a devote, been devout in her Christian faith and active in her beloved Kevin O'United Methodist Church for over 75 years. Whereas in addition to her church and other civic responsibilities, she is or has been an active member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Junior Palace, Greenville High School, Parents Teacher Association, and the Greenville Housewives Bowling League, and participated in weekly aerobics classes well into her 80s. Whereas during a long and productive lifetime, she has demonstrated in countless ways her dedication to the welfare of others and has earned the respect and affection of friends, neighbors, church family, and people from all walks of life and all ages. And whereas she has lived through the most eventful century of this world's history, in her great quiet way, has been a force for good in stabilizing and positive influence on those around her during those turbulent years. Nowforth, the Commissioners' Court of Hunt County, Texas, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this certificate to Marjorie Mae Merrick Pickens on the occasion of her 100th birthday with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more happy, productive years. And y'all want a picture?
Thank you so much.
Okay. How do you, we want to all come down here?
First. Ma'am, I've got a question about East Texas Teachers Day. Was that in Campbell before it went to Commerce? Were you there at the Campbell department?
Was it in Campbell before Commerce or always in Commerce?
Always in Commerce.
Okay.
Just get you right here next to Judge Stovall. Three, two, one. I'm the Capitol Mayor, man. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, with the proclamation.
Yes. Don't you get in there with the 30?
Yeah.
Oh, they want the grandkids.
No, we like.
They don't get myself in there. Yeah, we'll have to sign it and then get it to them, get it stamped, get it to them later. I'll get it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Get everybody to sign it, and once it's signed, I'll get it to you.
Okay. You're reading the CASA bill next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much.
Okay. Action item number four, accepting the resignation of Bonnie Hunter from the Neetex Board and appointing Mark Hutchins, Precinct 1 Commissioner to that board. Bonnie had been asking me for, I think ever since I'd become County Judge, that she'd served many, many years on that board and would like a vacation from it for a little while. So after the presentation last week, Mark expressed an interest in serving on that board, and I asked Bonnie if she, her request was still valid in there, and she still wanted off that board for a while, and she said yes. So Mark has agreed. So I'd make a motion that we adopt action item number four and appoint Mark Hutchins and accept Bonnie's resignation.
So moved.
I got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Judge, we didn't make a motion on the proclamation, we just read.
We did. Well, I jumped right by that. Okay. Action item number three, a proclamation celebrating the 100th birthday of Mrs. Marjorie Mae Pickens. I make a motion, we approve.
Second?
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item five, a request to transfer Glock Model 22 Serial Number FCG 783 U.S. and HC Inventory Number 00783 from the Hunt County Sheriff's Office to the Hunt County Constable Precinct 1 Office. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number six, a request to donate 24 metal boxes and six metal tables currently in the jail annex building at Hopkins County Sheriff's Office. We've, we stopped using the annex about a year ago, I guess, buddy, close to that. So it's been decertified as a jail facility. I understand Hopkins County is going to come and remove all of that at their expense, and we're donating that those items to them for them taking it out of our, not us having to pay to haul it off. Is that right? So I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, approval of the fire alarm monitoring and POTSS Plain Old Telephone Service monitoring for the Hunt County Juvenile Building at 2701 Johnson Street. Contract is for a three-year agreement with American Fire Protection Group, Inc. The monthly monitoring count is $40, fee to be paid from building, other repair and maintenance, 10-623-1800-2263. Entertain a motion for approval?
Judge, how many accounts are there? It says per account.
I don't know that answer.
What was the question?
How many accounts are there? I assume there's just one.
It said per account, and I was just curious if there were multiple?
I just found out.
Stacy, you don't, you.
This is just for this account, though.
It's just one account, it's just $40 a month. It's just one account.
It's just one account, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Right, every building has monitoring, but it's just for this one.
Okay.
Okay? We had a motion in the second? Need a motion?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, the County Attorney's Office requests number one, $3,000 stipend for the Administrator Paige Ashley, and one, $1,000 stipend for Janice Evans, and one, $1,000 stipend for Katie Jones of the pretrial intervention program for the Hunt County Attorney's Office stipends to be reimbursed by fees collected by Article 102.0121, the Code of Criminal Procedures. Is that on an, that's on an annual basis?
Uh, well, it's monthly.
So they'll get $1,000 and $3,000 monthly?
No, not monthly.
No.
That's what I'm saying. It was for, those totals are annual.
Yes.
Yes.
And the $3,000 for Paige was already budgeted with the position that was there before from the person that was working.
Right.
The only ones that were added are the two other individuals at $1,000 cash.
Okay.
Your honor.
And that's out of the forfeit chair of county, isn't it? Pretrial intervention, okay.
Your honor, may I add to that also in reference to monies that go with that? Like you said, Paige Ashley, the reason it's there is because we're giving her that stipend. And then the other two. And on the other aspects of this, the stuff was put in in January, but we didn't act upon it. So there was a difference of 6,000 versus 5,000 is different. Also, this money also includes the VACA and anything else that is related to it coming out of that same, same pretrial intervention program. The money's from there. Am I correct?
That's correct for the retirement and VACA.
Okay. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved. Second?
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine, MOU, memorandum of understanding with Hunt Regional Hospital related to the vaccine clinic, Daniel?
All right, in your packet that I passed out this morning, there's a, I believe, a two-page long, or three-page long memorandum of understanding with the hospital. This relates to the county health department that's been providing traffic control at the vaccine clinics. The purpose of doing this MOU is to allow for the hospital to seek reimbursement from the federal government for the county's expenses in providing that traffic control. The county, I'm sure that you'll remember from discussions, the last meeting and the meeting before that, that the county's also requested grant monies to pay for some of the county's expenditures and also potentially to pay for some of the hospital's expenditures. These two may end up overlapping, will only be able to recover any costs that the county has once, but basically this MOU is for the hospital's use in seeking that reimbursement so that we get at least two bites of that apple, technically four bites of the apple because of two other sources of funding that we're trying to get. And so basically this is just the paperwork that's necessary for them to attach to their request for reimbursement. It's not clear to them whether they'll get that, we may get it through one of the other three potential sources of funding as well.
Then you were able to remove that one paragraph, correct?
Yes, I spoke to the hospital, to several people at the hospital yesterday and late last night and early this morning, we made some changes. There's a confidentiality section that's been removed. I've also changed the name for the hospital to Hunt Memorial Hospital District. It was under a different name originally. Then I've changed that at the top and then at the two places at the end where there's identification of parties and signatures, otherwise it's, it's all still the same.
Any other questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're going to skip action item 10 until after executive session. Action number 11, upgrade of approximately 2,200 feet of County Road 1057 from dirt to rock in Precinct One.
Your Honor, I make the motion?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 12, upgrade of approximately 2,150 feet of County Road 3202 from dirt to rock in Precinct Three.
Make a motion that we allow this to take place and also money is in Eschrod.
Second, sir.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 13, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities along County Road 2584 in Precinct Two.
Make a motion, we approve the construction request for electrical power on County Road 2584, under usual stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, motion carries. Action number 14, replat of a final plat of Lot 44 of Cattle Creek in Precinct Two, Brian?
We are going to remove this one, we have to, some of the notification process was not completed on this one, so, so we'll, we'll have to...
All right, we'll move it to old business or probably just need to strike it because we got 30 days, that's the one we got to re-advertise?
Correct.
So it's going to be 30 days, so we'll just strike this one. Action item number 15, the final plat for the hills of Cattle Mills in Precinct Two.
I make a motion, we approve the final.
Hang on, hang on a second.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
This, of course, is a, this is a larger development. I know that, that Judge, you had a couple of concerns on it, they have been addressed, I have new plans and I have the, they, they've addressed it on the plat and I have the plans reflecting those changes that, that you were concerned about.
Okay. Mark, you got any comments or you good? Okay. Entertaining motion for approval?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of accounts payable?
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And the line item transfers, did you give us new handouts, sir? We're going to, we're striking the $10,000 from the Sheriff's Department request and we'll do it another time, so we need approval of line item transfers with the exception of the $10,000 transfer within the Sheriff's Department's budget.
Make a motion for approval of line item transfers with the exception of the $10,000 transfer from the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion for approval of budget amendments.
So move. Second.
Second, okay.
I'm sorry, I was waiting.
We're going to have two motions and then we'll say aye.
Sure, we got to go.
All right, we got a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
So move.
Make a motion that we approve.
We got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Got a second? You got all that, Jennifer? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Philip, you want it 13 and we moved it out of consent, did you want to talk about it in executive session or now?
Yes, sir, need to go into executive session.
First, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going, I need a motion to go into executive session under items one through five.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, motion carries, we're going into executive session at 1047. Y'all need a break? Yeah, obviously you need a break.
I've got the CNN camera back. Anybody else up there?
No.
Everybody else left?
Yeah, there wouldn't, unless they'll be standing up all the way to the seat.
We're back on. Okay. All right, are we back up? Okay. It's 11:25, we're back in regular session. We'll take up action item number 10, Establish Hunt County Elections Commission, Creating a Position for an Election Administrator and Appointing an Election Administrator Designee.
All right, in your package you have a one-page order that does all three of those things. Basically, if you approve the order as written, it reestablishes the County Elections Commission, which is made up of the Democrat and Republican Chairs, County Judge, County Clerk, and the tax-
There are all of them more right there.
We just started back up, I was telling them about the order that's in front of them for consideration. So if you approve this order today, it would reestablish County Elections Commission, it would temporarily appoint a designee to serve as the administrator. And then, the, once the commission is reestablished, then the five members of that commission would need to get together and vote on whether either Ms. Ash or someone else will be appointed as the administrator, and then that will come back to court for a final ratification at the next meeting, if that meeting happens before the next meeting, which is in three weeks. So, the Elections Commission is the chairman of the Republican Party and the Democrat Party for the county, the county clerk, county judge, and the tax collector. And so, we've got, you have a short bullet point memo in front of you that talks about the sections of the code that are referenced and the reasons that we're doing it the way that we are. Basically, the item that's, or the portion that appoints the election administrator designee, that position is called that because that's in the statute as the required language for this set of actions. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about the order itself, but we can also open this up for public comment. I know that the chairman are here, I don't know if they have any comments, but you can open it up for public comment.
Anybody in the public have a comment about this? Questions or comments, or?
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity here. David Hale, Hunt County Republican Chairman. I think the only thing I would like to say is just, and I'm not saying anybody's not doing it, is make sure, make sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. I think my operating thing or operating concern is, you know, we've seen in the last couple of elections, tempers can get pretty high, and in a republic, we need to, the people need to have, they need to feel comfortable with the election results. And I'm not saying that we have had any problem in Hunt County, I don't think we have, but at the end of this process, I need to be able to go home, go back and look people in the eye and say, this process happened correctly and appropriately, and there's not a hint of question or confusion or anything about that. And, so I guess that's what I'm asking for, is just making sure that we move carefully through this, so that there's no, no hint of any impropriety or anything, so. If you want to say anything, that's, that's, that's my motivation in this.
Good morning, Larry Davis, Hunt County Democratic Chair. There's a lot of confusion over this. My understanding, we had an election commission in place. I have an agenda from October 29th, 2019, saying that we were going to have a meeting. I never received anything saying that the commission had been done away with, disbanded, or whatever, so I don't understand how we're establishing a new commission. I agree with David, we need to do it by the book, dot all the i's, cross all the t's. We have a lot of people asking a lot of questions, our members, Hunt County citizens, and we need something in writing to take back to them and say, hey, here's how it all came down, and this is how it's going to turn out. Thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing, and it sounded like this is the direction we're going, but that five-member commission, I'm very much in favor of that. I apologize for not having the correct terminology, but I know there's one that was about 20 members and one who's about five, and I think that's the direction I understood going, that I'm very much in favor of that five-member commission, and would ask for your consideration.
We are too. That's part of why we're here. We couldn't ever get everybody together.
I just wanted to be on the record.
Okay.
Daniel?
Yes.
If you will, explain to them in reference to why all of a sudden that there was a question in reference to five members versus some more added, because they probably are not aware of this, that might let them be aware of it.
Well, basically, the elections code section that we used to move away from that five-member board and go to a joint elections administration, which is the one with the 20 members that we've been talking about.
Twenty-plus.
Twenty-plus. Isn't super clear, because legislature kind of pushed it through without putting into place the specific laws about how to undo that. And it doesn't say exactly how to do it, what is clear is that we have to have, with the County Elections Commission, have to have that five-member board. And you're right, that that did use to be in place, it's just not clear under the current law, because the statute is silent, whether or not it still exists, or whether it has to be reestablished. And so, the reestablishment is basically to be as careful as we possibly can be, to make sure that that group has the legal authority necessary, in light of the fact that the county initially, two years ago, moved to a joint elections administration. And it could definitely be argued, and probably rightfully argued, that the establishment of the joint elections administration destroyed, or at least destroyed, the power of the County Elections Commission. And so, that's the purpose of reestablishing this commission, is to make sure that legally, if there's any election contest that comes up down the road, that there can't be a court challenge to the legality or the, the efficacy of that board. And so, basically, putting this back into place as part of this order will remove any sort of challenge to what the elections administrator or the County Elections Commission does, in light of the gray area that's in the code.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? If not, commissioners, I entertain a motion for approval of action item number 10.
This will be the order.
Judge, may I speak?
Sure.
My name's Mike Hale, I'm precinct chairman, 430, and an election judge over there. It seems like you're about to make a motion to do two things, hire somebody and set up this commission. Could we break that into two votes, so that we can see where the commissioners stand on this?
Daniel? That's not exactly what we're doing, I don't think, is it?
There's three things, actually. One is establishing the commission, reestablishing it. Number two is creating the position of the administrator, and then number three is the appointment of the designee. And so, we only have one order, and if the commissioners want to, you can break that into three, but based on the way that it's on the agenda, I just won't have that for you to sign today, because what I'll have to do is take this order, probably leave all the same whereas's, and then put them in, you know, just that section in separate orders. There's nothing improper about doing that, if you want to do it that way.
So what we're doing is we're creating the election commission, the old five-member board.
That's right.
And then, we're creating the position of an election administrator, that that board eventually will vote on, but in the interim, we're appointing a designee to be that administrator, designee, until the five-member board meets.
Yes, okay.
And approves.
Can we break that into three motions?
Commissioners, I don't-
It's legal.
I request that you do that, and I'm, I stand for the first one, I'm not sure on the second two, on how that should go.
Okay.
If you want to do it that way, it has to be in exactly that order, though.
Okay. Commissioners, what do you all, what's your opinion?
I don't mind doing that, but Daniel, and maybe I missed it, could you make sure everybody understands what the designee is?
Yes, the designee is basically somebody that the Commissioners Court puts in place temporarily, under the, the new position, basically, the election administrator. And then, after that, the commissioners, or the County Election Commission is going to have to get together and vote whether to, you know, make that official, basically, and then if they do, they, I mean, at that meeting, they can either choose to hire Ms. Ash or somebody else if they want. Somebody's going to have to be hired to do it, but it'll be up to the County Elections Commission to make that choice at that time. Is that what you're asking, okay?
I'm happy to break it into three separate-
Do they, y'all understand, is that clear?
Question, are we creating another position between election administrator and the Commissioners Court?
Temporarily.
Yes, and that's a statutory, statutory position, the county elections, or the election administrator designee. But the final decision on, you know, who that, who the election administrator, not the designee, but the actual administrator is going to be, has to be voted on by the County Elections Commission.
Also in the election code, and I believe I read this-
Why'd you come up and talk to the microphone? This is the Rock Cast, you turn back.
Yeah, it's on.
I'm Randy Weiniger, 7406 Carroll Drive, I'm the Hunt County Tax Assessor. I believe I read somewhere in the election code, that if we're going to follow the rules, that that job has to be posted.
Yeah, would you take your mask off, I can understand your police.
I'm sorry. That that job is supposed to be posted to the public before the commission can hire somebody, I mean, they should be opened up to the public, the people apply, then the commission would, then, two weeks later, I believe, make that decision, who would be appointed to that position. Is that, did you read that? I read it in there somewhere. I mean- Well, if there's rules in place, I think we are following the rules, that's-
We intend to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, a question we'd ask our HR attorney, who's the one that put this together, so, yeah, I could follow back up with her, just to see if there's a specific rule about posting that particular position.
Well, I just, I just want to share that with y'all, I mean, this all played by the same, same rules, follow the guidelines, like we're supposed to, not go around and try to do something that we're not supposed to, or somebody make question in the future, that's all.
That's what we're trying to do.
Oh, well, I know, let's keep our fingers crossed.
That's what we're trying to do.
And you're right. You're saying in order, what is your first, in reference to what's first in order?
Exactly the way that it was raised on the agenda. So, establishing the commission, then creating the position for the administrator, then appointing the designee.
Okay. And y'all are desiring to separate it and put it in that order?
Yes, furthermore, I'd like to see hands, if possible, so we know how you're standing on it, because I trust you guys.
Okay.
You don't trust us, is that what you said?
I do trust you.
Oh, okay.
May I say this, I'm going to, this is my own opinion, in actuality, we're trying to do it, it's right. Basically, I think that we need to form, and I'm talking about the Commissioners Court in reference to the order, the order, we will establish an election committee, okay? That's what we need to do. Okay? Then the second aspect, basically, is say, okay, now, we need to have a election administrator, am I correct?
Yes.
And that's what we're wanting to do. Okay, and then thirdly, we're saying, okay, at this point of time, temporarily and all this, because this is what this paper says, it says, "Designee," I believe the gentleman used the term, interim or temporary, either way, we're going to have to change the order. You're hitting at every one of these things, in actuality. And I would be, I find it positive that if we can stress this out in that, in which that's what this says with the different technology, that we should be able to go on and vote this, in actuality, because we're going to give, we're going to take care of business before this election, I don't know when y'all are going to be, but we, y'all need to be, basically, an order needs to come out that y'all exist, and then we have to have an order, basically, that there's going to be a position. And the third one is leaving it to y'all, who y'all decide, then they can go out for that, as far as if, if this other's correct. But, we need somebody down there to be an administrator, make sure that it's going forth, where we have an election, if I'm not mistaken, in May, am I correct?
May 1st.
Yes. Now, how hard would it be for you to break these things down? Yes. Now, how hard would it be for you to break these things down and come before the court, or, in actuality, have y'all read this order? Have any of y'all read it?
Somebody just needs to make a motion and divide it into three.
It's easy to do, Philip. We can make the motions. I mean, that's not a problem.
Good enough.
So, if somebody wants to make a motion to-
Larry's got a comment.
Yeah. Not to belabor the point, but just for clarification. So, the election administrator designee is just an interim election administrator.
Correct.
Who will serve until which time the election commission meets and-
Yes.
-selects someone.
However that has to be done.
However that is, okay.
Yeah.
Make sure there'll be notifications and all, and that we'll handle, we, the election commission, will handle all of that.
Correct.
Okay.
And if we need to advertise it, like Randy said, that's what we'll do. I mean, I don't, we'll do whatever it's, what the law says.
I think it's important that we do that.
That's what we're trying to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
The easiest way to divide this into three is if somebody wants to make a motion to just do the first one, which is, I make a motion that we approve an order establishing the Hunt County Elections Commission.
Okay.
Daniel, I'll make a motion that we approve what you just said.
The forming of the election commission?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Go ahead.
All opposed. Nobody is opposed, so it's unanimous. Creating a position of, Daniel, who-
Yeah, if somebody now wants to make a motion to create the position for an election administrator, that would be the second of the three.
Designee.
No, not the designee.
Designee or temporary?
No. What this is, you should take a motion to create a position for an election administrator, period.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Last one.
Then, the third one would be appointing an election administrator designee. And the way that's in the original order is it specifically calls out Jeanie Ash by name. And so, someone can make a motion to appoint Jeanie Ash as election administrator designee.
Okay, "designee" also means temporary. Is that correct?
All right, well, I'm not, I can't give legal advice to the public. It means what it means in the code. And what it means in the code, basically, is that.
Good enough.
It's still going to have to be voted on by the county election commission.
A motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint an election administrator designee.
Jeanie Ash?
Jeanie Ash, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and what I'm going to do, when I get back to the office today, is to break this order down into three items, and I'll email them to everybody like I emailed this original order.
Okay.
And it can be signed. It only needs to be signed by the county judge and county clerk, but that way, everybody has it, you know, in their box.
Okay, so, at this time, we'll entertain a motion, go back into executive session. We came out so we, y'all wouldn't have to stay here all day. And so, we're going, then the motion will go back into executive session under 1 through 5.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We go back into executive session at 11:44. Thank y'all. Y'all wait around for the rest of the exciting work.
Yeah, they're going to lunch.
Yeah.
There's three items left on executive. There's the abortion issue, and then the two employment, well, actually, it was just, unless y'all want to talk about the designee.
Well, we got to talk, we got to do 13, whatever that was, and we got that 12 o'clock call.
Yeah.
And how long is that abortion deal going to take? A while?
I mean, it depends on your questions. I can wrap it up in one minute, but it's really complicated.
What's the court's pleasure? You want to recess and come back after lunch, or, I mean, because Daniel and I had to be on the call at 12. It probably won't take us long, but-
If I may, this will be simple and sweet in reference to 13 consent to formation upon county committee for evaluation on the RFP 214, that's 21 from my understanding. Cheryl sent that out this last week in reference to trying to get that. I wanted to remind the court, basically, that we've already spent during the architecture that we had due as far as DPS.
Can you get your mic, please?
They can't hear you. Just talk a little bit closer to your mic.
Okay, no.
Are we supposed to be in executive session?
Yes.
I think we're still streaming, guys.